Good evening. I call this meeting to order at 7:01 PM. If you are able, please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A rule call, please.
Johnson.
Present.
Kelly.
Here.
Mikulski.
Here.
Pollock.
Here.
Leaks May.
Here.
And now approval of the agenda.
I had one item that I was hoping we table until the next agenda, and that is 7I approval to backfill the customer service or advocate position with the reason being to give council
So do we need a motion to?
Need a motion.
What is the, what is the proper motion? Do we table it directly from the consent agenda, or do we pull it out of the consent agenda and then table it?
Pull it out of the consent judgment, or consent agenda and then table it.
Move it to the regular and then table it.
Okay. We're not going to move to the regular because it'll be...
Just for clarification, you want it for the next meeting?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Not for the regular meeting.
So I would just move to table it?
Able it till the...
Pull it off of the agenda.
But we do need to make a motion for it.
Yes.
Okay.
I would move to pull 7I approval to backfill the customer advocate position from the agenda and table it until our next council meeting.
Port.
Mikulski.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pollock.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
And now approval of the agenda with amendments. Did we?
Oh, and we approve the agenda with the amended agenda, sorry.
Port.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Mikulski.
Yes.
Pollock.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes. Item number four on our, on our agenda is the presentation of the lead line replacement policy update, update, excuse me. We have a few presenters regarding this, so who will be first, starting with you.
Here's the rest. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Like the presentation in March and April on water rates, the Director, Jim Jameson, and I will be doing kind of a co-presentations on this evening. Whoops, that is the wrong presentation. Spoiler for later in the evening. There we go. Previous council meetings have been some questions about our lead line policy updates, following up on the budget discussions from March and April. So Jim and I put together a presentation that will refresh the public and council on the 2018 policy, lead and copper rule, policy changes by the state of Michigan. We'll talk a little bit about the EPA's proposed changes this fall that will have strong influence on our future actions. So beginning with an introduction on the 2018 rule, will be Jim Jameson, Director of DPW.
Thank you, Joe. So 2018, the Michigan lead and copper rule changed a little bit. It was improved. The lead and copper rule requires local utilities to replace all lead galvanized and partial lines by 2041. This is an unfunded, unfunded state and federal mandate. It pushes financial costs on the local water utilities like Ferndale's, which in turn will increase the water rates paid by our utility customers. There's going to be three areas that we focus on tonight. Number one, material supply inventory. Number two, annual lead exceedance testing. And number three, annual replacement requirements. So number one, the inventory, the Michigan Safe Drinking Water Act expansion and CDSMI, and I'll explain that acronym in a little bit. The Michigan Safe Drinking Water Act changed in 2018, as I mentioned. A PDSMI, which is a preliminary, I always forget this, which is why I should have included it, distribution systems, materials, inventory. Thank you, Brett. And this is, Brad Schepler from HRC is here to answer any questions or help me through when I fumble. So in 2018, part of the requirement was the fifth leader requirement added to testing. Prior to that, we only tested the first leader during our lead and copper sampling, and then this act added the fifth leader. So you test the first, you pour three more, and then you test the fifth leader, and that's just a more rigorous, rigorous testing for lead out of the tab. Five percent of lead services is the standard that the state set for the next 20 years. That began in 2021, so all water supplies should be completed by 2041. And I will note that that five percent is a five percent on average over a 20-year term. Partial replacements were banned except for emergencies, so you're not allowed to tap copper into existing lead, whether you do it through the public or the private side. Service line replacement reports are due annually from any community in Michigan that has a lead service line in service. The action level was also planned to drop from 15 parts per billion to 12 parts per billion in 2025. The complete DSMI is due this year. It was due in January, but that was moved up October 2024 to coincide with the EPA rule changes. Additional 2025 changes that we don't understand currently could take place following those EPA rule updates. So we've already had a slide that kind of shows where we were at in 2019, or when this was filed in 2020, that shows some of our neighboring communities and shows that we're sort of an outlier. Berkeley had quite a few unknowns, we're a little bit larger than them, but if you really look, a lot of these communities did not report the unknowns and assume leads that we did. So that puts us in a category all to our own. We have a lot of unknowns and a lot of leads, especially compared to some of our neighbors. Because we're an older community, we're built prior to the 60s, once, when lead was kind of used a lot less. Ferndale's current lead line inventory that was filed with the state in 2023, this is something that we shared in March, but I'll go over it again. We have 388 that contain lead, that's been confirmed. We have 32 that are galvanized, previously connected to lead. 13, 16 of our unknowns likely contain lead. We have 147 that likely does not, and we have 61, 59 of which materials are unknown. We have 2,082 that were previously lead or galvanized that are now copper. And that's a total of 10,138 lines. So the EPA lead and copper rule improvements that expected to be updated by 2024 contains a few things that could change the requirements and mandate, including moving up the timeline for us from 2041 to 2037. They're going to, likely going to require 100% lead line replacement within 10 years. Michigan standard for testing is also going to be applied nationally, which we're already doing, so that's less of an effect on us. Lowering the lead level could go from 15 to 10, which is two parts per billion lower than the state was going to change it to. And I'll just note that, and we'll talk about it a little bit more, but when we do our lead and copper sampling, we do have homes that probably would be over this exceedance last year that weren't this year because of that rule change. Multiple lead exceedances could require additional action. We don't understand the extent of which yet until October. Verification requirements for unknown service lines is about 3% annually verified for systems that have a large amount of unknown service lines. So two, the lead and copper sampling, this is something that we do every year, we submit to Eagle. We sample 30 residential properties that we know to be connected to lead. Our water department performs the testing. Paragon Laboratories does the analysis, the results of which are sent to Eagle. What we measure for is an exceedance of 15 parts per billion. Any homes that are above that or above the action level, we replace their lead service lines immediately with copper. Additionally, if we are over the 90th percentile, which for us is four of 30 homes, if those homes test over the exceedance level, then that puts us into an exceedance or over the action level, we would be required to do double testing, and then our percent required for replacements would move from 5% to 7%. And in 2022, Ferndale recorded an exceedance that increased our annual replacement requirement to 7% for two years. In 2023, we had one exceedance. One of the things that we do for customers or residents on that list is anyone that's within two parts per billion of the action level, although we're not required to do so, we do a emergency replacement for that home. I believe last year, we had three properties that required replacement based on our policy. So the third thing, Eagle's annual minimum replacement requirements. So we assume, based on the, the water systems data that we've gathered in the last three to four years through the help of HRC, estimated lead line replacements that we have left after this year, and we're projecting to finish 400, we have 202 done now, is roughly $4,200. You'll see some slides later that refer to it being a bit of a moving target, because as information changes, so does our plan. Forty-two hundred lead lines. Joe corrected me, definitely not dollars. I wish it was dollars. Forty-two hundred lead lines at roughly $6,500 is what this estimate is for, and I will say that's incredibly low. Right now, our average over the last three years is about 5,700. We're assuming we're going to pay more in the future, and we're, we're going to look at cost estimating, but there's ranges go anywhere from 6,000 to 9,000 for a full replacement.
Through the chair, if our average is 5,700, why are we, why are we estimating the amount that we're estimating currently?
Yep, because, yeah, there'd be some discussion on this later in the presentation, but I will say that the reason that we did that is because we were getting an incredibly good rate that we're not likely to get again when we go back out to bid for a new contract. So at that $6,500, we estimate that those 4,200 lines are roughly $27 million. The 5% minimum replacement standard based on 4,200 is about 210 lines. That alone would be about $1.3 million. If we have an exceedance that we're required to do 7%, that minimum would be about 294, and that would cost about $1.9 million. The minimum annual replacement requirements based on our compliance timeline, so that's roughly 10 years for the EPA policy plan, would require about 420 replacements a year at about $2.7 million. The Eagle policy plan is a roughly 15-year plan, and that, for that, we would need to do about 280 a year for roughly 1.8. And I will also point out that these cost estimates do not include cost for verifications that will need to occur prior to the replacements.
And through the chair, are we, we're looking at the 15-year currently. The, the 10-year is pending the changes that we'll see legislatively. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, the 15 is a requirement set by the state, the 10 is the requirement that we presume will be set by EPA, and that should be verified in October.
And through the chair, two questions. One is, you know, 280 per year, on average, how many have we been doing per year? I guess I have three questions. Question one.
We'll get to that, and off the top of my head, I believe, not counting the 200 that we projected to do for this year, in the last three and a half, we're averaging 448 a year.
Okay, because then that answer is a cascades through a couple of my questions, which is, is 420 a year, based on market capacity and vendor capacity, is that something we can handle? It sounds like yes.
The answer to that is yes.
The answer to that is yes. And then when we say 4,200 estimated lead line replacements, that 4,200 gets us from this moment to completion as a community.
Correct.
And that assumes that we don't find more. This is just based on our best?
That does. This number isn't a, it's a conservative number. It is an estimate. It could change up or down. We don't expect it to go up, but we expect it will come down. I would say that it probably won't come down significantly. They were discussing what makes it go up or down, and part of the problem is that we don't know until we know, so we can't really speculate.
Through, through the chair. So I can give an example. A friend of mine bought their house in the early 1990s and automatically assumed he had lead lines. When they did the inspection for his street, come to find out that those lines must have been replaced before he bought the house because they're all copper. So there's going to be instances like that, where people are assuming because of the age of their house, it's going to be old, but there were records, you know, if you go back so far, there are no records of when lead lines were replaced by, you know, especially if it was done by the homeowner.
Yeah, and there, we find those cases throughout the year, where some private sides are assumed to be copper and they're lead, or vice versa. So that does happen. So the 2021 city lead line replacement policy, one of the things we talked about in this policy was scheduling. We said then that the replacement of private lead service lines will primarily be determined around current projects as articulated in the five-year capital plan, the road improvement plan, the water main improvement plan, and other determinations to meet the replacement requirements set by the state of Michigan. Our goal then was to obtain cost efficiencies by aligning annual replacements with planned and funded infrastructure projects. So the outcome of that was that we replaced about 1,789 lead lines between 21 and 2024, and again, that doesn't include the 200 we expect to finish prior to the end of this year. That average over that 3.5 years is about 448 per year. Ferndale selected by EPA for technical support through the Get the Lead Out Initiative, which I've mentioned, that just happened this year, and Congresswoman Haley Stevens touts Ferndale's lead line replacement program in May, we expect, and we'll communicate some of that on our grant funding slide later on. To get to funding and financing, since this program has been in place, we have reached out any opportunity we could to fund this program, whether that's through grant or low interest, water revolving loan fund. We got 12 million from the state, that is, was just depleted recently. Our DWAM grant for verifications, that was depleted in winter. We are using ARPA funds currently to do additional verifications because we've locked in a really good rate with our current contractor, and we're trying to get more information to plan next year's replacements. And then to go back to the Haley Stevens, we're trying to get federal grants through congressional reps to do additional field verifications. We're a finalist, and the award status of that is pending. And I'll say that we've also applied twice for additional drinking water revolving loan funds, last year unsuccessfully, this year, I believe we hear back in September, on whether we're successful. And that is a low interest state loan, not a grant. So the lead line costs, current estimate pricing for an average lead line replacement under our contract is $5,700 per line. And I will add a caveat that not, that is an average, because some, some are public side only, some are full, and some are private side only, and then this is the, this is the result of dividing the overall cost by the actual replacements that we've done. This rate is subject to inflation and contractual negotiation over the program term. Industry standard is roughly 6,500 to 8,000, and there's honestly, there are honestly people that go higher than that, probably up to 9,000, potentially 10,000 on the market. Current estimated pricing for an average lead line field verification under our contract is locked in at 325 per line. That is just not a price that we will ever see again. 2025 rate is expected to increase to 600 to 700 per line, but there are contracts that we've seen go as high as 900 per line. This rate, again, is subject to inflation and contractual negotiation. So cost estimating is a moving target because of these. We really have to look at it like kind of a range. The price per line will increase going forward, we know that, but that rate can be unpredictable. The total cost per replacement is quite different for a full replacement, as I mentioned, versus a public side only replacement. So what we presented on March 25th were these three options. The minimal, which was 1 million, it hurts to even say that's minimal. The moderate is 2.1 million, and then the accelerator is 3.4 million. And I'll say that the number of lines replaced per year is based on our current contract cost, and I think we did that at the time so that way we could compare directly the cost that we had locked in with the numbers of lines replaced per year.
Go ahead. Sorry, I actually wanted to go back a slide or two, but I, I can wait till you're done, and then we'll go back. Are you sure?
Yeah, your preference.
Okay. So on the lead line cost slide, you said that the expected rate for 2025 is going to be 6, 600 to 700, which is, you know, more than double. What is involved with that process? Is it an individual coming out and doing an inspection and filling out paperwork, or is it like a team of people? And the reason I ask that is, we're looking at, if we continued on the 420 a year, you're looking at $252,000 that we're paying for these, these inspections. If we could hire someone, it would be a lot cheaper to hire someone for the next five or eight years to do that work that works for the city than to pay a company that's just going to pay an individual.
Yep, so a pothole verification is basically...
Three by three square in the roadway?
Thereabouts.
At the stop box, so it's not the roadway.
Correct. That's correct. It is made in the green belt over the stop box, then they can verify going to the home and to the street. So they basically dig it, they use a vector to get down to the stop box, they verify 18 inches, I believe, on both sides of that, and then they do a restoration. And that's the process. And the restoration is just filling it back in, filling it with soil and...
Okay.
Overseeding it.
So it's not just one person going out and doing a...
No, it's a little, it's...
It's typically like a three-man team?
Yeah.
Three-person team?
Okay.
And a vector truck. Vector trucks are pretty expensive.
We have a vector truck, don't we?
We do, and we have kind of, not really debated this, but talked about it back and forth, and really, you would need two vector trucks in service just because there's a lot of, or you could do it maybe with some moving things around and rearranging the schedule, but in the summer, for instance, our vector truck is in service almost every day doing catch basin repairs and doing other work throughout the city.
Okay, just, I just wanted to put it out there, something to look at. Thank you.
Yeah, so to step back for one second, so these replacements, 140, 341, 558, those are all based on the $5,700 amount. I did the numbers because I have a spreadsheet where I can just kind of play with what verification costs are and what service line costs are, and I changed it to 65, and it, it dropped the numbers. We would still be able to meet the 5% average for each of these options, but it takes, takes you down to, I think, under 100 for the minimal, closer to 280 for the moderate, and then the accelerator would drop us down to about 450 a year, roughly. And I can kind of game that out. And one thing I will say that I think we should do is coordinate a little bit with HRC on building out some better cost estimating and projections for a 10-year program if we assume that we have 4,200.
Excuse me, this slide is pulled from the budget presentation from March 25th, and the purpose of the slide was to illustrate the compounding effect that this mandate has on local rate payers. We would have to likely issue bonds if we were to choose to issue bonds in multiple series in order to get this mandate funded by bonds. Our other option is to annually raise rates through the water, fund in March during the budget process and not issue bonds. So there's a couple of different options. We also have different bond scenarios that we could propose, and as we said in March, we wanted to take the opportunity to understand what happens in October, process that, and then give you our best recommendation.
Sorry, through the chair, I think I'm a little confused. So we have two options, one, to issue bonds, or two, not issue bonds.
Well, no, you could issue bonds, which would mean you raise a lot of money upfront, and you pay for those annually on a program.
Okay, and so this, this chart is showing if we issued the bonds, series one, series two, series three?
Correct. This is, this chart is specific to a scenario in which council chose to issue bonds.
Okay.
The alternative, if there isn't, we just look at the water rate model and update it based on our lead line mandate every year, and that's just something we manage every year as part of the budget process.
Through the chair, and you're talking about an adjustment to the water rate model that we currently have in place with the, the current escalation?
Yes, we have one budget rate, one water rate model right now.
Okay, sorry, through the chair, off of Mayor Protem Mikulski's question, comment. I thought the minimal option is what we're currently at today. When we raised the rate, when we approved the rate in April, we approved it based on this minimal option.
When you approved the rate in April, you approved one year of spending, if you can remember back to March 25, it was a while ago. We are using the bonds that we've already issued for water infrastructure updates and applying those to meet our minimum lead line requirement, because our funding was depleted this year from the state's revolving loan fund. So that left us with a need to, we, we had the means to pay to meet our minimum requirements by the bonds that council already... by the bonds that council already issued for water infrastructure improvements. And so, the long-term strategy, we said we would get you after October. We have to understand the rules changes before we can give you a funding scenario. So we, your budget only funded lead lines for this year to meet our current year.
And when you say this year, up to July 1st?
The lead lines that would start next season. So the July 1 fiscal year starts next month.
Yeah.
And so the water lines that will be done next spring for lead lines are part of that fiscal year. That's what we approved.
Through June 30th?
Yes, correct, that's correct.
Of 2025?
So the annual workflow with no exceedance, that's meeting our 5% requirement. The lead service, the lead line inventory is updated by progress verifications. This assumes minimum annual funding needs. Assuming we continue with no exceedance, the 5% minimum threshold is determined, CIP infrastructure projects are updated, and lead-heavy streets are prioritized and confirmed. Lead line properties will then align with the CIP infrastructure projects, and funding is raised through the water rates. If we hit a 7% exceedance, the inventory is updated by progress and verifications. Annual funding needs are increased. There is an exceedance, so we then need to hit the 7% minimum threshold. Public notice requirements are added, additional testing requirement is needed, and additional, well, additional replacements and probably verifications will need to take place as well. Infrastructure projects will be updated, the lead line properties align, again, with the CIP infrastructure projects, and funding will be reevaluated, scheduled reviewed for changes, funding needs adjusted. The October ruling updates from EPA and Eagle, again, there's a few things not on this list, but these are the three key elements. The EPA's ruling on how a lead line inventory shall interpret lines identified as unknown could impact our 5% minimum line requirement. This minimum requirement could influence the sizing of the bond issuance. Number two, the annual exceedance testing is expected to lower threshold from 15 to 10 parts per billion if the EPA rule change passes. This will directly influence annual replacement requirements and trigger more communication, testing, administrative response, resources, and total replacements. So yeah, increased replacement requirements, regular scheduling reviews, and funding evaluation. The compliance timeline through Eagle is currently 2041. EPA is proposing moving that to 2037. This will expedite achievement by four years, which will dramatically impact our replacement requirements, and again, change funding and scheduling needs. So the policy update recommendation timeline that we put together, we would like to, between June and July, upload the current map from HRC to the city website. I've shared hard copies with council, and there's a lot of information. There wasn't really a good way to present that in a slide form. But that is something that we maintain internally on a daily basis. Jeffrey Weeks, our project manager, as he's out in the field, as replacements and verifications happen, the information is connected and updated and saved. I will say that one of the, one of the rule changes that EPA or Eagle is potentially looking at for systems over 50,000 is to, EPA is currently looking at changing the rules for water supplies over 50,000, which we are not, to make sure that they have public reporting available, so that would be a standard that we don't need to meet, but we are exceeding. So we also want to refine the content update schedule with our communications department. We're going to collaborate with EPA, get the lead out initiative on new opportunities based on best practices. We would like to present ordinance recommendations to the ordinance committee in that same time period. There's a few adjustments that we could make that would help our ability to get service lines replaced. In August, if those ordinance updates are supported, we would like to have those up there. Progress update on lead line verifications funded by ARPA, we would like to deliver that in August as well. We would like to have a policy language draft update in August that will include annual road paving program, consider new approach that prioritizes cost efficiencies. And I said include, what I meant to say is exclude the annual road paving because that is done next year, and we've already done all of those streets this year. I will add that we also have done the streets, or will have them completed in the next two months for our water main improvement program for three years out. So prioritization, cost efficiency, compliance, and funding will move us forward in this matter. So September and October, we would like to have the rules changes reviewed. They will all be out, we hope. We'll get an eye on those and make changes and adjustments. Exceedance testing results expected. We, we will be doing our testing very soon, the results of which will be submitted to Eagle, and we should have everything back prior to September and October. That is also our CIP project budgeting season as well. So, so it will be important that we have more refined cost estimating to include in the CIP for the lead, lead service line replacement program. We will update our policy language, and then November and December, our annual replacement needs will be finalized. We should have bonding funding recommendations presented to city council, and we should have a schedule forecast finalized and communicated. And there, we've had some discussion on how far out we can accurately schedule, and in discussion with the project manager, I believe that we can put a, a solid schedule out for one and a half to two years, two years' time.
Can I, can I back up for a hot second? So you're saying we can put together a potential schedule of one and a half to two years, not three years, right?
There are some, some things that make three years difficult. I would suggest that two years would be appropriate. The last thing that we want to do is put someone on the schedule for year three, and then, and there's enough variables that could change and then potentially move that block off the schedule. And then you'd be telling someone, we'll get to you in three years, and then potentially, now you're not on the schedule, but we should get to you in 10 years.
Or you would get to them in the fourth year, right? Like, is this not, would they not get bumped out a little bit further?
Possibly.
Instead of just immediately going into sometime in the 10-year timeframe?
Maybe.
Okay.
Through the chair, that triggers a question for me. So, walk us through how we're prioritizing, how are we choosing the chunks? How are we setting our workflow right now?
So right now, a lot of it was based on infrastructure policy. We have infrastructure programming planned out years in advance. We mostly, we didn't want to cut into streets that had just been repaved. Now that we're going to be outside of a road bond paving, it's important that we come up with a better prioritization that looks at how many lead service lines we expect on a block. There's a number, I'm struggling to come up with a better answer because we need to get better at our prioritization. Really, I won't say that we've been solely focused on infrastructure projects, but infrastructure projects have been the primary mover. And the second, well, maybe I'll say the primary mover has actually been the state mandate, when we're over the exceedance level.
Go for it.
So, in theory, we could, the, in theory, the prime mover of our infrastructure planning could be lead line replacement. Instead of lead line replacement following the road plan, it would be the other infrastructure plans following the lead line replacement. Because to my mind, as a community and as a council, our highest priority is lead line replacement. Of all of the infrastructure needs, because this is the one that immediately and directly impacts people's health.
Through the chair. I, I agree with you. I think the issue that we have is there's still two years left on the road bond? So there are certain streets that have to be done within the next two years.
Sure.
By the bond. So I think the thought is focus on those streets that need to be repaired and then have those lead lines. Once you, once you've completed the bond work, then I think you can focus on the lead lines, because we have to cover the work for the bond. I mean, you can't just say, oh, we're going to spend it six years out.
Sure, but we can change which roads we're going to do. We can change our road plan. That is possible.
Not really, because we've done most of the roads. You still have, you have certain roads that are just remaining that haven't been done. We have to do those roads. It's not like we're going to not do those roads and do roads that we've done before.
I'll, I'll interject. We, we have done those roads, and we, the ones that we haven't done for next year yet should be done in the next two months, three months. So next year's infrastructure programs will already be completed by this fall.
Well, you're working on roads right now. So for example, I know that you're on East Chesterfield, you know, that's part of this year's program, but we still have at least another year of bond, bond work. So next year is the, the last of the bond work?
Yes.
Okay.
Next year is the 10th year of that program. We've almost completed lead service line replacements on those roads this year. Will be done in time to not have to worry about next year's paving roads.
So, I want to be clear about something. We are going to do roads. We are then going to tear up those roads at some point, because we still have to do lead line replacement. So, I get it, I understand. I want to remind everyone for the 18th time, this is my day job as well. So structuring and overlaying infrastructure planning is just kind of what I do, and I'm trying to figure out how we, I'm not going to wait two years to finish the bonds, to, to put a meaningful plan together for lead lines. I'm not going to. That's unacceptable. We need to come up with something that gets the lead lines prioritized, and if that means changing part of the road plan, we'll do that. Because we need to focus on the areas where we have the lead line issues. We're going to have to tear up roads anyway. I don't care when they were replaced. If we have a block that's filled with houses with lead lines, what are we going to do? Well, how does the road plan at all weigh in on that?
Well, because right now, he's asking for two years. So he's asking for a two-year plan instead of three-year plan to be able to get through the bond period for the roads. Once that's completed, then you can focus on the, the row, the, the lead line replacement as being first priority.
And all of the roads that we're planning to do in the next, for the remainder of the bonds overlaps with the lead line plan and hits streets where we actually have verified lead lines that need replacement?
Well, but here's your other, here's another question that you have to answer then. We have how many streets that have to be replaced with lead lines? Who's, who are you? Are you going to pick which ones get first? Are you going to play favorites? Or are we going to base it on certain criteria that's going to say, well, we should do these streets first, even though there might be only 15 houses that need to be replaced, as opposed to this street, which has 25 houses, because there's other issues on that street that have to be repaired, repaired first than the other street?
So through the chair.
I would like to hear that from the public works director or the city manager.
And through the chair, let me, let me interject briefly. I, I feel you, where you're coming from on that and the prioritization and that we don't get to pick favorites. But we have a, we have a map that I've been frantically scrambling through, because this is the first time that I've seen this, that estimates where we have homes that could potentially have lead service lines. And in my mind, I am trying to understand if we know that, and we have a basic estimate of, we, we know where we've paved currently, and I would prefer not to tear those up right away. I'm assuming some of these have been paved in the past and are probably coming up to need to be repaved again. Can we not get a plan around that and start investigating those lines and start calculating that out and mapping that out so that residents have a better understanding of where we are planning to move with these lead service line replacements? Yes, no?
Yes.
Yes? Okay.
And I will, I will add that most of the streets that we would end up cutting into, that we would consider newer, are still seven to eight years old, just because we've done a good job over the last four to five years of not cutting into things that we have just repaired, staying one year ahead on our lead service program.
And if I may, also through the chair, so then, Sid, the...
The chair.
Look, you all got, all right, look, forget all that. So, the paving, the street pavings that happened last year coincided with lead lines last year? Am I to understand that? Because that's what it looked like.
Typically, lead comes in, and then the following year, the roads are paved.
Okay.
Then it's the same with water main, except for in this case, since we don't have paving, repaving to focus on, we're almost three years out ahead of water main replacements.
Through the chair, can I get real granular on a couple things? There's a slide in here that's talking about presenting ordinance recommendations to an ordinance committee, and that if those ordinance updates are supported, we could have policy update recommendations. What kind of ordinance recommendations are we looking at that would change our approach to lead service lines?
So, I'll mention, part of the reason, part of the reason it's important to schedule in front of a water main is that access can be difficult. There's just a certain percentage of a block that, whether they're working, can't be bothered, or are less trustworthy of a contractor or someone from the city coming into their home, they may push off signing the access agreement, they may not sign the access agreement at all. So sometimes we struggle to get into a home. I apologize, but I think I just spun right past your question.
Kind of. I was asking about what kind of ordinance language would we, are we proposing, and how would that change?
That brings me back to it.
Yeah.
So, to get around that, some communities have passed ordinances that allow us to get an access agreement signed by a renter, for example.
Okay.
Sometimes landlords are out of state, can be difficult to get ahold of. Ordinance, ordinances have been changed in Michigan and throughout the country to allow a renter to sign that in lieu of the landlord.
How much of an impediment has that been thus far?
Well, it, it would speed up the process if we could get a renter to sign an access agreement. Not a huge impediment, but there are, you probably don't know often...
About 25% of our properties are rentals.
There can be issues with landlords. I would, so, in speaking to Benton Harbor, who admittedly has a lot more renters than we do, they said that that policy change was extremely value, valuable for them. They were able to get all the access agreements signed by renters, and there was no situation in which a landlord filed a lawsuit or objected after the fact.
This recommendation is coming from our GLOW partnership with the EPA, and that's really new information. So when we talk about best practices, we don't know what they totally are yet. We've just started to communicate directly as part of the GLOW initiative. And so the EPA is bringing national best practices from communities that are doing this nationally. They also connected us directly with the Benton Harbor situation. And Benton Harbor is an independent situation that is not reputable to us. They got state aid, and I think we'll run 100% done in one year.
Through, through the chair. I, I say this with great respect to my fellow council members, but I, I think we're losing a little bit of focus. We're only able to afford 140 lead line replacements a year based on the money that we have available. It's not the fault of the DPW department that they're not able to complete the work. So I, I guess I'm a little confused as to why there's such concern over priority of getting a two or a three-year schedule out when we can only afford to do so many. We're not going to be able to do more if we have three years or four years out. It's not going to matter. If I get my... If I get my house done in, in next year or three years from now, it's still not going to change the fact that there's other houses that haven't been done and won't get done for another eight years.
I mean, through the chair, I get where you're coming from on that, but we know that there's a minimum threshold we have to meet, right? So we have the state minimum threshold, then we have what we assume will be the federal minimum, minimum threshold. And we know that we're going to have to get funding for it. So we don't have the funding currently. We know we have to get it. And in this presentation, we were talking about potentially getting funding from Congresswoman Haley Stevens and things like that. Having a, having a plan in place so that we can actually have those intelligent conversations, so that we can approach her and ask for funding solutions as well as find these bonding opportunities, I think makes sense. But we have to start with a plan, and we know that we have a minimum threshold to meet. So in my mind, it has been, why don't I see the minimum threshold plan so that I can at least iterate on it when this change happens, which we are assuming is going to change, so that we can go into it more readily, more speedily, and get more funding quickly, I'm assuming?
I, I, I mean, okay.
Basically, basically, I'm saying, I'm not trying to be a jerk about it. I'm just trying to, to make sure we have a plan in place so that we can respond when we know that we have these emerging trends that are going to happen. And, and I, I value what you have said and all the direction that you've given us. I think this is a great presentation to kind of set the stage as to what our expectations are, where we see the market moving, what we're going to have to respond to. It does not change the fact that there's a minimum threshold. And that's, that's why I have been harping on this.
So essentially, we have a bond paving program that we do have the funding for, and that's to move forward, and we're waiting for the funding for the lead lines. Is that what I'm hearing?
Through the chair, a few things. And I want to kind of summarize what I've heard as well, being the audience member back here. Number one, yes, there is an average minimum that is a known quantity. That average minimum changes. It hasn't been static, and it just changed as of December. It was put on our radar that there will be rule changes in October. So before December, what we thought would have been a minimum threshold changed. And we don't know how it's going to change until October. Well, we're pretty, you know, we're getting better clarity. So there's always going to be a minimum requirement. I do just want to remind everyone, we're creatures of the state and federal government here. We don't control when that minimum requirement changes. And it's changed multiple times since 2018. So we just, we have to have some flexibility in understanding that. Two, prioritization, lead lines is the lead dog. I think I've heard you all say that, and I don't think anyone's disagreeing about that. You know, we had the luxury, I hate to call it luxury, but when the mandate was passed, we just happened to be in the middle of a road bond pavement improvement program. So it just, you know, we were able to capture that efficiency. The last thing we want to do is dig up and replace. So, but to the councilman's point, it's a mandate. It's going to happen. We got to do it. Our goal is to, you know, have the minimum disruption on new roads as possible while achieving the mandate. But that doesn't trump meeting our minimum requirement. So our goal will be, will continue to be, to look at these properties, improve our verifications, and then scale with the contractors many blocks that we can knock out as possible on a yearly basis and that we can afford. And I say that because we have, this will all be significantly disruptive to ratepayers. So there's what we can achieve, and then there's what is fundable, right? So that, I mean, we just end up, the minimum might be all we can do. So I feel like there's general agreement from what I'm hearing on the prioritization. And I would say, you know, what we're looking to do is make significant, I'd say the next step, the next generation on our policy, the phase two of our policy, if you will, over the next few months. I'm hearing council wants an updated schedule sooner. I'm hesitant on doing it any sooner, but you know, in August, you see, we're looking at policy language draft updates. I'm sure, I, you know, we'll, we understand that scheduling is a priority. And we can work with our consultants to see if we can put together a reasonable, publicly available, minimum expectation of two-year with an aspirational expectation, I'm hearing you, is three years. But because things change, and because we also are prioritizing a lot of other work simultaneously in the summer, I want to make sure that we're just being responsible about communicating information on a legal public health mandate as we can.
So through the chair, the only thing I, I have a slight response to that, and that's, things change all the time. And, and I think we have to, we, we can't not put information out because we know that something might change in the future. We know this is a fairly certain change. So I think it's, I think it's relatively easy to put together a schedule sooner because we know what our current mandate is, and we know what the EPA is likely to do. We can always put something together on the current plan, the current mandate, because that is still what the law is. So we are being faithful to what the law says. And you can make it very clear on that schedule that this is, we expect a change from the federal government that will affect this schedule.
Sure.
That your home, you know, you, you can rely on this schedule to the extent of the knowledge we have at the time. It will probably change in October. So, you know, keep checking this thing. We'll keep everyone up to date. As soon as we know information, we'll update these sorts of things. Because, you know, what we're going to get if the EPA does what it's going, likely going to do, it just means we're going to, if, if we are going to try to stay on target, let's just pretend we live in a universe where we can stay on target for the ideal annual amount, we find the money, it falls out of the sky, then, then we know that what we're going to be accomplishing is likely more per year. So the likely direction of a lot of homeowners is going to be forward in time versus backward in time. Now, yes, there could be some slippage based on our financial capabilities, but I do think it's possible to put something together based on the current known legal regime that we're in with the caveats that a change is coming. Because if the change was coming next month, I'd be like, yeah, legit. The change is coming multiple months from now. So it's far enough out that, you know, it's far enough out that I think that it's worthwhile putting something, even with a disclaimer up, sooner. So that as we get, as people start asking about these things, because they will, we have something a little bit more concrete to direct people to. So I think part of what's motivating this is that several of us are, are receiving a lot of energetic feedback from residents, asking questions about these things, and we're in an awkward position of not having the answers and not being able to direct them to something. And it's, I think it's leaving us feeling a little bit, like we need something, something a little bit more official. And just sort of like vibes, my vibes.
And if I may, it's, when, when you were speaking earlier, Joe, the, the feel that I'm getting, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, is that there's concern about putting out a plan and the plan being interpreted as concrete and not flexible. I think to Councilmember Johnson's point, we can have a disclaimer on there that this is subject to different directives, different changes to the environment. And again, having, having a plan is what I would consider our, our basic responsibility to our residents at a time when they are looking for this sort of thing, and they are trying to preemptively plan and potentially even do lead line replacement themselves. By giving them that, that direction of, we are going to be addressing your area within the next two years, three years, whatever it may be, it at least gives them something that they can look to and plan around.
Through the chair. So are you proposing something like the sidewalk replacement program where we have it mapped out, you know, these two years, this area of the city is done this two years?
This may be the first time somebody read my mind. That was exactly what I was thinking of. And, and it, it should be something that, like, that easy for people to understand in looking at these. This is, this is wonderful. This is helpful. And immediately, I can see where we have replaced service lines, and here's a little patch where we haven't. It, it feels like it's a no-brainer that we would just flex in, in that spot, and map that out, and let people know, yep, that's going to be our next area. Again, subject to whatever the guidance is that, that we expect to receive.
Yeah, yeah, disclaimers are clear. That's, that's an easy add-on to any communication. My mind is always just being thoughtful and clear before I put on any strategic communications on complex initiatives like this, especially when we have a lot of complex initiatives going on right now. Communications are important to me. That's not to say we can't do it. It's to say that I want to be methodical about doing it, and I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver. I'd rather over-deliver and under-promise. So, you know, looking at the June through August, you see a lot of crossover between the concept of scheduling. You see communications updates. You see tackling this map to see how we can make that more consumer-friendly. You can't even upload that file to our website right now. So we have to, there's a lot we have to do on the front end to prepare for the policy update. But, you know, scheduling is a piece, but I don't want to lose sight of the actual comprehensive policy, because the policy itself is what informs our workers in the field. It informs the contract, it informs a lot of things. So scheduling is a piece of it. But, you know, we clearly hear the, the concern that you're conveying of the residents on scheduling. I, I just, you know, I'm hesitant to put a, a number out there and say, we'll do three years' schedule with a disclaimer within four weeks. I'd rather continue the methodical approach we have, and I hear that it's a priority. I'll keep you updated, and we are happy to have a current monthly update on this to keep it on council's agenda, if you think that's helpful.
That would be fabulous.
Through the chair. Kind of stepping back a little bit. Right now, we are scheduling lead line replacements based on the, we have been, based on the roadwork.
Generally, yes.
And we've been sending out the year prior to that roadwork, the crew to identify which homes have lead lines, and then the next year, doing the actual roadwork after they've ripped up the street and replaced the lines. Moving forward, after our road bonds are completed and we just start picking streets, are we still, is that additional time needed? Or can the identification be done in the spring and the roadwork be done in the summer and the fall? Or do you have to do something beforehand to identify, I'm sorry, to identify what houses have the lead lines? Is, is the idea that we would try to accomplish that all in the same year?
The lead time between verification and replacement.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, in perfect world, we have our verifications done the year prior so that way we can take the results of those verifications, apply them to our program, and then adjust our schedule for the prior year to make sure that we are hitting streets that are lead-heavy. So normally, those verifications would happen a year prior.
Okay. So we're going to continue on that path going forward, where the verifications would happen one year, and the word, the work on the replacement would happen the following year?
Correct.
Okay.
So through the chair, to the verification point, we've added the $150,000 of ARPA to get, you know, to try to kind of front-load as many verifications as we can before we lose these really sweet terms. How much further can we push the vendor on that? Could we, if we found more money? We're coming up on the end of a fiscal year. We're going to know where we've got underspend and overspend. So I mean, if we were able to scrape up another, I don't know, $100,000 or something, how much, how much goodwill do we have left in the vendor of giving us this?
It's not necessarily just goodwill, but I think we're probably approaching their capacity.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So in, I'm not sure, I could have a conversation, but I'm not sure how many more they have the capacity to do on top of what we already have.
Yeah, through the chair, that was the number they gave us when we originally approached the ARPA. They thought they could achieve that.
Okay.
But I don't think there was any harm in pushing.
Okay.
Sure.
I was figuring, the more we can, more verifications we get in, then that also helps with scheduling and mapping and things like that.
Are there any questions for our expert in the room? If you have any lead line legal or random questions, Brad is the one you would go to.
Through the chair, I have questions.
Bring you out here just to sit?
Yeah.
Whatever you need me to do.
So how many cities do you do this for?
Well, at least a dozen.
Yeah? How are they doing with their lead service line replacement?
As good as Ferndale, I can tell you that. You guys are, you guys are at the top of your game, I can tell you that. We do Pontiac, too. Pontiac probably has the next most, just because they're, they're larger.
Yeah.
And they've gotten a lot of grant money.
How are they scheduling theirs out?
Pretty much everyone is scheduling ahead of infrastructure. That's really the first thing that I do, is say, okay, where are we doing roads? Where are we doing water? Where are we doing sewer projects? Let's get in there and do something. That's always number one. Number two is high-density lead areas. Anywhere where you can gain efficiency by having a contractor do a lot in a little space, you can get better prices. So those are always the top two. We really haven't gotten past those top two priorities yet.
When you were looking at these quarterly maps, were there obvious areas of high-lead service lines that we should focus on?
So those maps have been generated through all, all the verification we're doing through the DWM grant, through the DWSRF contract that we have. They've been focused on streets where we knew we were doing paving to try and get ahead and know exactly which ones we need to replace. We are currently in the process of the complete distribution system materials inventory is due October 15th. So what we are doing right now, as we speak, is looking at all that data and finding the trends, finding out, comparing when the water main was installed, when the house was built, comparing those to old historic aerials to see how the city was developed, what were previous schools that were demolished and now are houses that are, you know, from the 60s and 70s, which are all copper. So that's exactly what we're doing right now, is we're finding the trends, we're finding the areas in which have presented a lot more lead versus have presented a lot more copper.
Okay.
The only issue we have is through this, we've found a lot of anomalies, where it'll be full lead, full lead, full lead, full copper. You go look at the houses, and they look all the same. Like, they were built all the same vintage. You couldn't tell the difference between them, but you find that one random.
Mm-hmm.
So, and we've, we, I think we predicted about, what, 75% of the ones that we thought would be lead were actually lead.
Okay.
So that's all what we're doing right now, and the more verification information we get, you know, the better our assumptions can be.
Okay.
And by, I'll go ahead.
So are we, are we saying that the assumptions that are mapped on here are subject to change based on the lead service line verification?
I believe those are not, those are all the verification information that we have. We don't have any assumptions on there yet. By October, we will have, I need to look at those maps, we're going to, does every single property have a three-digit letter code on it? I don't believe it.
The vast majority, actually, no, I take that back.
Okay.
There are, the ones that have had the lead service line replaced have the three-digit code. And the rest are just categorized based on the home build year.
So by October, we will have to make publicly available a, if we don't have the information, if we haven't verified the information, inferred information on what we think. And anyone that we infer, or based on the trends and what we're seeing, we feel has a good chance of being lead, needs to be notified that they potentially may have a lead service.
Okay.
So that has to happen 30 days after the October 16th deadline.
Gotcha.
So by November 16th, everyone that might possibly have a lead service will be getting a letter from the city saying, hey, we don't know exactly what you have. You're listed as unknown, likely lead, or something like that. You know, here are the steps you can, hopefully, we'll have a online portal by that time where they can say, oh, I might have lead. Let me go take a picture of my service and get essentially free information, right? That's what we're trying to get, is free information. Why pay someone to go paho? We can get free information. If it's lead on the inside of the house, we know it's lead. We don't have to go and paho the house because we had to, we have to replace it. So that's, that's saving the city 600 bucks right there. Every time someone could go and take a picture. So it's incredibly effective.
So that's interesting. That's interesting. Would it be, could we maybe create a campaign around this?
Yes. And that's a lot of what the GLOW initiative is going to teach us a little bit on how to, how to do that outreach.
Okay.
Ideas from all over the U.S.
Could we, could we maybe, could, could we, the council, maybe get some, like, early training on how to talk about that, or how someone can properly take a picture, or what we're looking to take a pic, like?
Through the chair, I would be happy to share that information. Through the chair, I would be happy to share that information. First had our, our lead exceedance, we got a ton of information, which I think was on the old website and I don't know if that was carried over to the new website. So we have a ton of that information, it's just a matter of getting it out there.
Oh, okay.
So if you want to go online, and we actually set a couple up for, one for the city of Kiko Harbor, one for the Village of Brigham Farms, if you wanted to go on the web right now, you can see the online, and actually, there's a, there's an NPR website that goes through like a YouTube video on how exactly how to do it and there's step-by-step instructions on how to take the picture, where do you take the picture from, how to do scratch tests to know, is it shiny? Is it copper? Is it soft and lead? So all that, all that is in the online portal where you can collect the information.
And when you're saying online portal, are you setting up a portal for us?
We have, we have set them up for other communities, yes.
Okay.
And we've been, we've been in discussion about doing it.
Okay.
And to give their program manager access.
Were contacted with you to do that?
Yep.
Is that going to cost us more money?
We already have it set up, so it's not much.
Awesome. Good. Love it.
That's, that's the beauty of having a consultant, right? We do it for someone else and we just give you the information.
Through, through the chair, to Mayor Protam McCoskey. What did you say about the old website that had information?
We had a bunch of information on lead service line verification, like on the inside of your home.
Mm-hmm.
And how to do it on the old website after we had that first lead service line or lead exceedance.
Okay. Because if I recall, in 2020, when we were replacing the meters, I thought the meter replacement company was determining whether or not homes had lead pipes inside. So we should have all of that information for 98% of the houses in Ferndale. So I guess why wouldn't those maps reflect that, that information?
Well, unfortunately, the company that did it did not do a very good job of doing it. We had the program manager go in and kind of QA QC a lot of it and the results weren't, weren't 100%.
Of course.
If they want.
Now, to the meter replacement company's credit, that was not originally, when they, when they bid the contract, it was prior to 2018 when all this came out. So it was kind of asked for them, it wasn't, since then we-
It wasn't part of the contract.
Part of the contract. I don't know who their personnel was or they had it, but since then, we've actually done programs with other municipalities and actually did training with the people that are going out there on how to identify, set up GIS kind of web-based apps to, you know, take the picture. Because the big thing is, a picture is worth a thousand words, right? You know, taking that picture and say, someone says lead, you see a picture, it's like, no, 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 it's not lead, it's copper, you can tell. You know, that's, you know, getting access inside the homes is the biggest challenge. It's always the biggest challenge.
So if that data wasn't 100%, do we know what percent it was?
I would just say, it was 70s.
Okay.
Yeah, which makes it really tough to, you know, base any decision on something that's 70% accurate. Again, very unfortunate, yes, that would have been the exact time to do it.
Better than I expected, quite frankly.
There's areas, you know, there's certain areas, but again, when they're going QA QC-ing it, they're getting in the house themselves. Now, there's other departments across the city where you can kind of interrelate this, whether they be rental inspections, you know, anytime, anytime anyone else, a plumber or anyone gets in the home, if you can get down there and get those pictures, that's great. And I know we have a GPS or a GIS, it's called a collector app, which, again, I don't know how well it can be communicated across, but I know Jeff has one where, again, he just takes the picture and it uploads, exact location of where you're at, you type in the address and it goes right into the information.
Through the chair, again, to Mayor Protam McCoskey, I know that you have a connection with the city of Warren, someone that is on the commission there. My mother lives in Warren, so I remember, and this was many years ago, that I had to take pictures of hers. And they had, it was in the water bill, the information and instructions were in the water bill. Take a picture, upload it to an email, email it to a certain address and it was, that was done, I mean, that's, is simple, you know, it wasn't that complex. If you didn't take the picture right, they said that they would respond and ask you to retake the photo. So it's not all that complicated.
Thus, we do that for the city of Warren as well.
Oh.
It was our setup to do that.
I just, I just did the NPR tool online because we link to it in DWSD, links to it and puts it on their lead line page, really.
Where we got that, stealing stuff from people, right?
Stealing stuff from DWSD. And it's, I mean, yeah, it, I, that was a lot. Walking through that, I was like, yeah, anybody could really go to their basement and do this. This is really, that's really cool. That's really something I think we can, I think we could really push folks in the community to do this, you know, and contribute that data. Yeah, include it as an insert to the water bill.
Again, after October 16th, we're going to have, we have to notify everyone that there has lead or may possibly have lead.
Sure.
So that's a great time to add it to that information as well.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Interesting. So I just have one, one last thing and it's only, it's about the maps. So you were asking about the data points on the maps. Yes, some of them do have the three, three letters indicating three points of verification. Some have two, some have one. What are the points of verification that would fill, that are filling that in? Like what?
It should be on the bottom of the, of the map, kind of a little, little map that kind of shows you on the bottom left-hand corner. So point one is inside the house. Okay, point two is on the private side of the curb stop, which is, which is the shut-off valve that's typically at your property line or right behind your sidewalk. So point two is on the private side, point three is on the public side.
Got it. Okay. I didn't even see those little numbers.
And you'll notice there are some that are LLC.
LCC.
Or CCL.
Yeah.
So it's, it's extra tricky. It is not foolproof if we just have them verify inside their house.
Sure.
Correct. That's why Ego wanted you to do it because sometimes it transitions at some point. Sometimes plumbers went in and just replaced the lead part that goes into the floor.
Right.
Try and pass an inspection or something. Sometimes they did it because the old meters, they didn't necessarily have a good setup and the lead pipe was too weak to hold the meter. So they literally just put copper in so there was a better support for the meter, essentially. So there's a lot of different variations of why you find that transition from the private side of the curb stop to inside the house is different material. But we're trying to collect as much information, the more information we have, the better our inferences can be. Again, we're trying to go through the historical data as much as possible. It is a, it's, it's a big puzzle we're trying to put together, essentially.
But not impossible to give us a potential two-year plan, correct?
Again, with the disclaimers and if you set your expectations of what you, I think that's the biggest thing, is that you're clear in the expectations that you set and how you're prioritizing these areas. What are your goals as a council? I think that's, as long as you're clear in those, tough is not impossible, but it's tough to argue against how you came up with your order, essentially. And then thing, you know, things should, as long as you're, be able to be flexible because you never know when grant opportunities come up for other things that, you know, I know you want to go for some of these CPF grants and stuff. You know, if you get a big road one or a water one, you know, Jim's going to want to get in there and say, okay, we got a great water project, let's get in and get those service lines replaced. So we're going to switch some of this. So I think as long as you understand that flexibility is important as well.
I, I think that, as council body, and I hate to speak for all of us, I think that we've all gotten very accustomed to being flexible with changing environment and COVID and all the different things that have happened to us through the past few years. So I think that'll be relatively easy to adjust for.
If I have anything else, I'll go back and sit down.
Okay, well then. After all that, we have called the audience. Opportunity, state your name and your address. Right.
Hey, I'm Sharon Schass, president of the Ferndale Community Concert Band and we have two upcoming concerts this month and the next couple of weeks. Our first one is down at Bell Isle at Sunset Point on Wednesday, June 19th at 7 o'clock. It's an outdoor free concert, weather permitting. Then on Sunday, June 23rd, weather permitting, we will be in Martin Road Park at 3 o'clock in the afternoon for another free concert. Bring the whole family, the splash pad is right there. I know Parks and Rec is trying to get a couple of food trucks to commit to that, but it'll be our first outdoor concert ever. If the weather isn't cooperative, we'll still hold the concert, but we'll be in the high school at 3 o'clock PM on June 23rd. And on that note, another thing I wanted to talk about was Pride. It was my first year not being a volunteer in any way, shape or form because we had a family commitment. And I was talking with Greg after Memorial, after the Memorial Parade and remembering our very first Pride Parade where there was about 10 of us, arm in arm down Nine Mile led by a police car. And I think the fire engine was behind us and we were literally walked from Plantavon to Woodward, shouting, "Go Pride LGBTQ!", you know, waving a flag. And Julia Music has done a phenomenal job, just exploding. A wonderful, family-friendly event and I'm so happy for Julia and certainly happy for the Ferndale Community Foundation. And I just wanted to say kudos to Julia. And then in regards to what was presented, I'm curious as to whether or not we ever applied for funding because the government in, what, 2021 approved a $50 billion, you know, money to be invested into the Clean Water Act. And in hearing this, the other gentleman speak, he referenced Pontiac applying for grants and stuff like that. Did we apply? Do we not qualify? How are we getting money from the federal government?
Taking a page from Michael Larry and Special Events and speaking on a turn tonight, we have a little bit of different news to share from DDA. Last Thursday, downtown Ferndale hosted Erin Barnes. She is the CEO of Main Street America and she was on a tour throughout Oakland County and the Main Street communities and they came to Ferndale to have lunch with us. We had a fantastic time at Luisa's Artisanal Street Food and she just remarked about how impressed she was about our fabulous partnerships between the DDA and DPW and the Police Department here in Ferndale and what a special community we are among so many other communities nationwide. This is following earlier in May when five of our DDA board members and staff went to Birmingham, Alabama for the Main Street National Conference, including Councilmember Kelly. And this was just an incredible time for us to get down there and learn about what other communities are doing. We were also really impressed that so many other communities knew about Ferndale even having not been here, having been here in the past, and they recognized us. And it just feels really special because of our commitment to be in a great American Main Street. It's something really, really important for us and we're also always looking for ways that we can improve. So following that nice luncheon last Thursday and that great conference in Birmingham, Alabama, we were recognized by Main Street Oakland County for Downtown Beautification Award. We got a big oversized check and a fun photo opportunity and $600 for it. And so this was recognizing the You Belong Here mural campaign and I just wanted to take a note to celebrate this and recognize some volunteers. Summer Really, the engagement manager is an absolute champion of all things art and creative in Ferndale. We are very lucky to have her commitment. Also, the dedicated time from so many volunteers, LaBiba, Mercedes, Jess and PJ and others who spent time putting together this campaign and bringing it through to Ferndale. So if you are, you know, looking at our downtown Ferndale media, you can see how many people take pictures in downtown Ferndale. They love that photo drop, it's very visual for them and we love being a place where people share those fun memories. So we're also really excited to be announcing our next iteration of public art. Look for an announcement coming for that very soon on what that theme is going to be and how businesses can participate, how artists can make proposals to be featured in downtown Ferndale. And then you can also, in the meantime, go to downtownferndale.com-publicart. There is a self-guided tour that you can follow around downtown already and engage with the art that we have in place. And continuing on another amazing theme of public art, we will also be kicking off the Nine on Nine Concert Series in downtown Ferndale starting on July 14th. This will be a nine-weekend series every Sunday at Shiffer Park for free music and we're just really, really excited about the diverse lineup that we have. It's going to be, I think, one of the best years yet, so please look for those at Shiffer Park starting in July, running through September.
What time is it on Sundays?
I believe it's 4 o'clock. I will confirm that. We'll make sure we have everybody informed.
And just while Jenny's leaving, I just wanted to say, I had the pleasure of attending that event and what it was, was it was really exciting because it seemed like it was like the Oscars or the Emmys for communities. It was really neat to see your name up there on the screen nominated and then we're waiting, we're just so, you know, biting our fingernails, did we win? Did we win? And when they mentioned that, the DDA, we had won for that, the Beautiful Mural Project. It was so exciting. We just jumped and everybody supported one another and it was just exciting. So I was, my first time attending that and it was fantastic. I want to go again now.
We can keep doing things. We have so many more nominations to submit next year, so I want more of these. Thank you.
That was so exciting. Okay.
Any more called the audience? Okay, all right. We don't have a public hearing tonight, so we're moving on to the consent agenda. Item 7A, approval of the May 28, 2024 meeting minutes. 7B, approval of the resolution display, to display the Juneteenth flag outside of Ferndale City Hall. 7C, approval of a resolution recognizing Juneteenth National Independence Day. 7D, approval of the payment for renewal dues to the Michigan Municipal League in the amount of $10,134. 7E, approval of the Ferndale Dream Cruise Rockin' Live Entertainment Performance Agreements for August 16th through 17th, 2024. 7F, approval to modify the May 13th, 2024 Charter Amendment ballot language following feedback from the Attorney General's Office. 7G, approval of the renewal of the Oakland County Tactical Consortium Agreement between the city of Ferndale and Oakland County. 7H, approval of the summer 2024 special assessments. 7I, now, 7I, approval of the Workers Compensation Insurance Program. And 7J, approval of bills and payrolls as submitted by the Finance Director and subject to review by the city, by the Council Finance Committee. Who will entertain a motion for the, to receive the consent agenda?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
McCoskey?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
Leaks Matt?
Yes. And now we are moving on to the regular agenda, item 8A, consideration of the 2024 Annual Ferndale Dream Cruise Sponsorship Agreement between the city Ferndale and Campbell Marketing and Communications. Who's presenting that? Would that be Michael?
Through the chair, while Michael comes up. We generally pull this from the consent agenda because as an employee of Ford Motor Company, I abstain from voting on this topic, even though the contract is not directly with Ford Motor Company, there is a financial benefit to the company and so I'd rather not be seen as someone who is supporting a financial support to my employer. So I will be abstaining from this vote.
All right. Well, we just, we're excited to have Ferndale, I mean, Ford Motor Company come back as our sponsoring, presenting sponsor for the Ferndale Dream Cruise here in downtown Ferndale. While Ford Motor Company is the presenting sponsor of the overall Woodward Dream Cruise event, they, in addition, specifically sponsor the events in Ferndale because we do feature Mustang Alley, which is the largest car show during the Woodward Dream Cruise. And this year's Mustang Alley will be not only celebrating the 60th anniversary of the Ford Mustang, but also be the 25th year that Mustang Alley has been in Ferndale. At one time, it started out to be about 50 cars, now it's over 650, so.
I believe the reason why we pulled it is so that it could be disclosed that Councilmember Polika- it could be disclosed that Councilmember Pollock would abstain from it. But if there are any discussions regarding it, now's the time.
A motion to approve the 2024 Ferndale Dream Cruise Sponsorship Agreement between the City of Ferndale and Campbell Marketing and Communications, and approve the Director of Special Events to sign the agreement as submitted by the Director of Special Events.
Second that.
Pollock?
Kelly?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCoskey?
Yes.
Pollock?
Abstain.
Leaks May?
Yes. Now, item 8B, adoption of City Council's 2024 Strategic Plan Update, presented by the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. The City Council held a Strategic Plan Update Retreat in March 2024 with Reftellis Consulting. We try to update the strategic plan every four years. So this would be an update from the 2020 Strategic Plan. The Strategic Plan included full attendance from City Council. City Council's goals were stated on the presentation from the facilitator's notes.
Sorry, through the chair. Can you talk to the mic? It's not picking up much.
Is this better?
Yes.
And city staff had 10 leaders in attendance, directors and subject matter experts like our sustainability, like our zero-waste manager. And we're looking at long-term, short-term planning and then building relationships and team dynamics from a new administration. So three questions the strategic planning really seeks to capture. We want to understand, we want to get a snapshot of what today looks like. What is working well from the new legislative body? And so there was a hometown headline and a recent success celebration exercise was undertaken. It's included in the retreat report in the packet. Next, we have to do visioning. Visioning is really the determinant of everything we do today with purpose and intent. So we review the vision statements and council ended up updating all, I think, all critical success factor definitions were updated by council through workshopping definitions as a group. And then finally, what are the initiatives? What are the things that we have to do to be successful and help us realize our vision? And so those were adopted through a prioritization exercise I'll get to in a moment. Defining terms, important to understand what vision is. So City Council's vision statement I'll show in a moment. It is an aspirational statement reflecting on what we hope to be known for. Mission statement is really talking about who we are and what we do, why we do it. That's more of a staff internal metric. Cultural values are guiding our behavior. It's what we use as a tool, for example, right out of the gate when we have an open house. We onboard people and knowing them into our culture, making sure that they're a good fit within our cultural values. The guiding principles really inform how we respond to the external world around us. Really helpful when we talk about our response to pandemics that we didn't expect. We talk about other social issues that we didn't expect. So we look at being progressive and equitable and sustainable and resilient in how we respond to those things. And then critical success factors, those are the outcome areas, the things that must go well that, in order for us to achieve our vision as a city. And the priority initiatives are the things that support that vision. We said, City Council reaffirmed the vision statement that Ferndale is the benchmark for a modern community that embraces the richness of diversity and brings inclusive hospitality to life. Our DPW is going to help me put this vision statement on the lobby wall of City Council. They're going to be doing a stencil project on their. I held a state of the organization address in May, and all of my staff and all new hires understood that we had a vision and mission, but they did not know the definition of it. So we want to make sure that that's getting in front of everybody's eyes, public and staff. As part of their day-to-day, when they look at that wall and they pass through that wall, we're reminded of the direction we're trying to go. And as staff, we're reminded about who we are and what we do and why we do it. So we're stewards of progress. We anticipate needs. We engage with our community and we serve with excellence. That is our aspirational selves. That is a reflection of the staff on their best day. That is what we aspire to be. Cultural values are the four I's. This is incorporated into everything from our hiring process to our performance planning. So we have to talk about acting with intention around being inspiring. That means we really focus from a director level. We focus on mentoring. We focus on coaching. That is really important when you have such change in the workforce that we've had over the past four or five years. Integrity, everything begins with integrity from what we do. We do the right thing, whether anyone's watching or not. Inclusion is clearly an important cultural value for us, as well as innovation, which is always looking to approach things with an open mind and leverage opportunities that you might not have seen otherwise. To avoid the phrase, because we've always done it that way. City Council reaffirmed and updated the definitions for these eight critical success factors. These are defined in the packet in the retreat report. I did not define each definition for this presentation. So the prioritization schedule, there were two consensus building. There were multiple initiatives listed on the board. We can't do everything. So in order to prioritize council, each marked individually their priorities. They were given a limited number of dots to put on the board to represent the priorities. We have, so these that got five votes are labeled as top priorities. Four votes are labeled as high. If it was less than that, it was labeled as others. So you can see through that exercise, that's how you get your prioritization. We have 16 top priorities, 10 high priorities, and 45 other priorities. I've separated those. I identified these in the packet, but now I've separated them around outcomes. Because when we budget and when we do other strategic planning, we always try to organize our initiatives around outcome areas to be purposeful in what we do. So on the alchemy of economic prosperity, there are three priorities. Council, so this is an example, high means four out of five. Four out of five prioritized creating an annual survey for local business feedback, address parking on the east side, and improving the Nine Mile streetscape. Each of these were defined as an emerging priority, meaning that they were new, newly generated at that retreat. On supportive infrastructure, we have top priority, meaning all five agreed. The priority from community plans are to construct Martin Road Rec facility and to construct a new public safety headquarters. Four out of five agreed to establish the new DPW transfer station and constructing a new salt barn was a high priority, as well as evaluating downtown public space receptacles. Community plan.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
That last one is basically garbage. Right? Trash.
Yeah, we need to do our curbside containers better. So how we handle recycling, how we actually quantify the diversion rate, all those things need to be improved.
Very politically correct statement.
Very nuanced, yes.
Yes.
We're talking trash here.
We're talking trash.
Community, and community plans means it's an adopted plan or exercise, such as the Facilities Task Force to the Master Land Use Plan and everything in between. On safe, protected, and engaged community vector control, providing alternative animal control models, that was an emergent priority and voted as a top priority by the council. And creating a Welcome to Ferndale Resource Book from landlords and tenants that referenced the community plan priority from another initiative. So we're pulling that forward from that plan, saying this is a strategic priority for council. And that was a high. Accessible transportation, this is an actual budgeted project by council that was approved by council in the April budget. And that's to begin to plan, to fund the planning part of redeveloping the Wellington Alley. It's a key corridor piece for us. Organizational and financial excellence, this is the only critical success factor that really leans more heavily internally on internal metrics. So there you, that's why you would see a lot of emphasis on budget and finance reporting and excellence reporting. So we have top initiatives, meaning five out of five council are prioritizing each of these internal controls and/or policies, reporting recommendations to be a priority. Now, I've read the other one. So creating a public monthly report showing high-level risk budget to actual, summarizing annual tax and spending reports for residents, updating documented financial standard operating procedures, or SOPs. We do have a financial policy book. And third-party outside organizational performance assessment and an employee survey conducted by an outside firm. Strong regional partnerships, regionalism is an important success factor for us. So we do have a mental health co-responder program initiative. We're collaborating with Gloria Loak in Madison Heights and Hazel Park. We hope that that gets launched in the next six to eight weeks. And you can expect communications about that to be forthcoming. We're meeting with PD and comms next week to get an update from Oakland County Health Network. We want to expand that, but that requires additional funding. So that remains an aspirational priority for regionalism. The next would be to develop an eight-mile plan for our segment of Eight Mile, recognizing that Eight Mile stretches through many communities and is overseen by Eight Mile Boulevard Association. But as an emphasis on resiliency, our guiding principle, we want to make sure that we are able to manage our own asset, whether Eight Mile Boulevard Association is there or not. Healthy, connected, invested neighborhoods. More prioritization around curbside trash containers. This is on the residential side. A desire to have us seek grants and small, and study small charges via the sanitation fund to source curbside containers for private residents. Establish dedicated harvest position and find a better solution for animal control. Each garnered a top priority level, five out of five. Next, we have an emphasis on community wayfinding signage updates across the board. Adopt specific incentives for barrier-free housing developments and establish a public land for inclusive housing policy. Each garnered four out of five are high. You'll notice that some of those sources called bring forward, that means they were present in a previous strategic plan and were asked to come back as a priority. And in climate resiliency, our final critical success factor, create drop-off sites to expand our recycling program and study feasibility of creating a Ferndale Street Tree Nursery, expand multifamily recycling collection, and implement mandated recycling for the multifamily units. Each of those garner top prioritization, or five out of five. And then integrate green stormwater infrastructure in downtown and park projects, also a high priority. So what do we do after it's adopted? We have city communication updates. Certainly, the website's going to be adopted. We have 2025 Fall Staff Performance Plans. So when we do goal setting as a staff, we incorporate city council strategic plans and we distribute amongst the directors responsibility for moving some of these initiatives forward. So that will occur in the fall as we do director to city manager performance evaluations, performance planning, rather. Initiatives marked as other, we do still monitor those, funding and operational opportunities. And then if we see something that we can leverage and opportunity, especially with funding, to move something forward that was on the other list, we would let council know. And then that's a discussion and an iteration that happens in a moment. We did, we have cut the former Strategic Planning Progress Project Management software that also included a public dashboard component for progress updates. That was cut in budget. So we're looking at lowering cost alternatives and gap solutions for the plan management solution right now. Right now, we will just use internal software that we have and manage it through that.
Through the chair, could I ask a quick question on that?
Sure.
Did we capture all of that data before ending our contract with that company?
Yeah, we own that data. Oh, I'm sorry, that's it. Questions of council, if any.
Through the chair, no questions. But, you know, going through the, the report, the summary report, brought back a lot of memories, especially like the headlines, the parting thoughts. Each of us gave a comment, so it was a good day. Very productive. If there are no objections, I'm going to make the motion to approve the 2024 City Council Strategic Plan Update as submitted by the City Manager.
Pollock?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCoskey?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
It was a good day. We are now to the part of our agenda where it's called council. I am going to start with the City Manager with department head updates.
Thank you, Mayor. Give me one second to get back in the list. Well, I know there's something coming from the clerk, so I'll begin with the city clerk.
All right, the clerk's office is kind of back in election mode again. We have an election coming up on August 6th for the state primary election. Positions like US Senate, US House, State House, as well as county positions as well. County Commissioner, County Executive, Treasurer, Board Commissioner, all those big positions. We will be sending AV applications out. They should hit the post office today. So you'll probably see those later in the week if you're on that absentee voter application list. Please note that many people, in fact, about 3,700 people have transitioned to the absentee voter ballot list. So if you're on the permanent ballot list, you don't need to request an absentee voter ballot for any upcoming election. We'll just automatically mail those to you. But we still do have about 4,200 people on that AV application list. So we'll certainly see people probably transitioning over to our larger list. But other than that, that's pretty much all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Dean. Sorry, through the chair. If people want to volunteer, actually, you get paid for working the elections, how can they go about that?
Great question. If you go to ferndalemi.gov and select Clerk's Office on the top of the, on top of the screen, you can come, go to our website, the Clerk's Office, and there is a location on our website that allows you to sort of submit a preliminary application so we know that you're interested. And then probably around the end of June, beginning of July, we'll reach out to all individuals on that list to see if they're interested still in serving as an election inspector for the August and then November election eventually.
And do they have to work the whole day, or?
Another great question. We generally prefer that individuals do work the whole day. If they can, it's not a big deal. We just ask that they either work the first half of the day or the second half of the day. So they're either present for the opening or closing procedures because there's some legal things that sort of happen with that.
Okay. And how much do you pay an hour?
The pay is $15 per hour for election inspectors and $17 per hour for chairpersons.
Okay, thank you. Got to sell it. Got to sell it.
Next, we have our Director of Communications reporting on behalf of our Parks and Rec Department.
I almost said, "Good morning, good evening, Mayor and Council." Yes, so I'm speaking on behalf of our Parks and Rec Department. I've got my rec hat on today. First of all, they wanted to summarize a little bit about this weekend's first Skate Jam at Geary Park. This is an event that took the place of what was Gravity the last couple of years, which was a joint festival with other organizers. So this is technically the first year of Skate Jam. Emmanuel said it was really successful. He said they had probably about 250 people show up for it. You know, great weather, great day. He wanted to make sure that we thanked not only the sponsors, but also all of the volunteers and staff members, community volunteers who came out to make it such a successful event. They also wanted me to mention that the Pajama Movie Party is this Thursday night at 5:30 PM. It's going to be at the Corolline Club. So rain or shine, because they'll, excuse me, it'll be indoors. The event starts at 5:30. The movie itself starts at 7:00. So there'll be games and activities and things like that leading up to it. There's no cost for anything other than concessions if you choose to buy them. There's no cost for anything other than concessions if you choose to buy them. And the movie is Kung Fu Panda 4.
Yes.
I did not know it was a thing, but apparently our city manager does.
Oh, the mic's on.
You can tell who's got kids. And he also, Emmanuel also wanted me to mention summer camp. So, actually, as it stands right now, they still have a couple of spots available for every week. The registration for the first week closes this Thursday evening at 5:00 PM. So, head to the recreation website or the city website. We've got information on the homepage you can easily get to and you can learn more about that. That's it.
Thank you, Karen. Chief Emmy, if you'd like to come up next.
Good evening, mayor and council. Wanted to plug our street corner roundtable. It's scheduled for following the flag raising ceremony out front. You can meet us at 1445 Pinecrest. One of our residents offered to host us there and I think they're, they're a volunteer that we got from the Fern and Learn program. So, it's a fantastic way to network and Fern and Learn brought us some interest and kind of connected us with our community, so we appreciate that. I also wanted to-
Chair, I'm sorry. You said that it's on Juneteenth? Flag raising, because I showed the flag raising at city hall on the 18th.
The day before.
Oh, 18th. I guess I have the date wrong. Our street corner roundtable is on the 19th.
Okay, because the flag raising is on the 18th.
Oh, gotcha. I got that confused. So, I apologize if I caused any confusion. Yes, 6 to 8 at 1445 Pinecrest. Meet us for a street corner roundtable. Hopefully, if I notice or pass along to any members of your neighborhoods who want to join us. I also want to thank and give my appreciation to Michael, Larry and Julia Music and everyone who participated in the planning, especially the special events committee. I know all of our departments have some input. It was a fantastic event. It was incredibly well attended and very safe. So, I think it's a tribute to our processes for special event planning that has become a benchmark in metro Detroit. So, I appreciate everybody's input. We couldn't do it without them. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Our assistant city manager, James Krazan, will give us an update on Martin Road Rec
Yes, thank you. Good evening. So, we did hold our first community engagement session for the conceptual design of the Martin Road Recreation Facility. The first session went great, good turnout, some really good feedback. We do have the next community engagement session scheduled. It is going to be June 27th, same place, the Curling Club, 6:00 PM. And in between now and then, a quick shout out to Riley Coleman, our communications specialist for designing a fantastic online survey that's going to go out to collect some more data and more community feedback on the project. So, looking forward to it.
A question through the chair. Do we have any opportunities for online engagement?
Yeah, the survey that's coming out should be, should hopefully be before the end of this week.
And we'll be able to share that survey link out to groups and folks in Ferndale?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Awesome.
Awesome. Thank you, James. And just a reminder, which is the topics that have been covered, but there's a flag raising ceremony in honor of Juneteenth on June 18th. And just a reminder, city offices are closed in observance of Juneteenth on Wednesday to 19th. And mayor, back to you.
Now, we will have council and I think that, where did I start last time? I started a few last time. All right.
You started with me last time, but that's okay.
All right, we'll start with council and Polica.
So, the only thing I want to say is taking off from Mrs. Chess's comments about Ferndale Pride, congratulations to Julia on a fantastic event and thank you to all the volunteers that have worked on the event. Julia does a great job at leading it, but without volunteers helping, there's no way that we could pull the whole event off. So, we thank you and appreciate all the support through the city for the, for the event. DPW, fire, police, all helping make sure that it was a safe and fun day. So, that's all I have.
I mean- Johnson?
I want to echo that, you know, congratulations to Julia and the team of volunteers and, you know, Ferndale Police, Ferndale Fire, everybody who was just really making pride. An amazing event this year. It was just, it was a beautiful day for pride. And I really want to especially shout out the Ferndale Accessibility and Inclusion Advisory Commission. They, for the third in a row, have their sensory tent for folks to sort of, who need to step away from the hustle and bustle of pride and have a, kind of a quiet place to sit and center themselves. It was extremely successful. The feedback from folks was just joyful surprise that this was available to them and, you know, how wonderful it was that we offered such a, such a thing at our pride. And I just was delighted to volunteer in the tent and be able to talk to so many of the pride attendees who took advantage of it and had such a unique perspective on, you know, their way of interacting with pride and what pride meant for them in that, in that space. So, it was, it was just wonderfully successful. So, you know, congratulations to Alan Hale and the team on the advisory commission. The Martin Road Public Meeting for the new Martin Road Facility was excellent, to echo what the assistant city manager said. Really great turnout, was really heartened by that. And I just want to encourage residents, you know, keep an eye on your calendars. We're going to have a couple more of those. The survey we just talked about, we really, really do want maximum input on this project so that it's truly a community, supported and community-driven design and conceptualization process. So, you know, whether you have kids or no kids or you're a pet owner or a senior or a teenager or even younger, if you, if you want to provide that input, we will absolutely welcome that and we desire that from everybody. So, please, please get engaged on this Martin Road Recreation Facility. I really want it to be for everybody. All I got.
All right. Mayor Protim McColsky.
Echoing the sentiments of pride, I, other than that, I don't have anything to really offer, but I do have a question to our communications department. I, I received a couple emails this weekend about our website and we still have some disclaimers on the site about, you know, the transition that we made and that there's, there's still some rockiness with the transition. And a few residents pointed out that there are references to our former mayor, there's some lormipsum text on the website, there's some broken links. Is there, do we have ongoing communication provider so that they can correct some of those?
Yes, we have ongoing communication, although those are things that we can and should correct. So, actually, our city manager just asked about this a couple of weeks ago, so the timing is good. And he wanted to know about our review process and what kind of a piece we have in place for that. And we are coming up on our one-year anniversary and so with that will come a review of, I mean, it won't be an in-depth kind of process like we had last year, but it will be a department by department review of the pages so that we can find any of these little issues that pop up and occur. So, that will be happening by the end of June. I would encourage anybody who finds an issue like this to reach out to me. We also have a, like a general forum still on the website, like you mentioned, where people can upload any kind of little stafus that they're finding, but you can also send it to me and/or Riley and we'll make sure it gets taken care of right away.
Follow-up question to that. Is our web provider able to hold a, like a web crawl? You usually use a tool to scrape through the website looking for lormipsum. My fear is these funky little things may just be missed by most people, but then you click on a link and it sends you down a rabbit hole and then you find that text. Are they able to perform a scrape like that and hunt down text and broken links?
My guess is absolutely yes. And I will ask her about that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Council member? Kelly? Just want to echo what everyone has already said. Police, fire, DPW, everyone had a hand. Pride, a successful event. And also the pride, the flag raising ceremony, that was really nice as well. And thanks to the speakers that showed up, it was a nice reminder of what pride was all about. You know, some people still just don't have a place that they can place it. Really nice. And thank you to our DPW director, James, for prompt attention on the crosswalk and getting those trees cut and looking for a permanent solution. That being said, I just wanted to say that tonight, council member Kelly and I, we were able to attend the Ferndale Lower, Ferndale Lower Elementary School's grand opening. It's a beautiful building, nice facility. And people were so excited to be there, so it was really nice. Full circle, I mean, I even got a chance to see some of the classrooms where my children are pretty much grown, where the teachers that they had are still there. So, it was really nice to see. Thanks, I want to also say thank you to Julia Music for a wonderful pride. It was a great day, so many people out. I think there were more than I've realized that I've seen in the previous year. It was a gorgeous day and everyone had a good time. It was very well done, so hats off to Julia for planning such a wonderful event with all her volunteers, police, fire, DPW, everyone involved. And I know that I haven't had a chance to speak with Julia or connect with her, but I'm sure she's already planning next year, so.
She is.
Yeah.
May 31st.
May 31st.
Gay in May.
Yeah, gay in May.
And then also, I don't know, I know that this, particularly this Friday, the 14th, our state senator is hosting a coffee hour at Desert Oasis from 11 to 12. If someone would like to come in and say what you love about the community or what you don't and let our, let our senator hear about it. But, other than that, I don't have any other updates. And if there's no objection, I will adjourn this meeting at, looks like 9 o'clock. Hey, Dean.